Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Hello, everyone. It's Thursday, January 27th, and it's and this is a meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District in consultation with the Westminster Town School District. And given this is a night of the week, it must mean we have a school board meeting. So I'm calling it to order at 2:00 p.m. And we'll begin with introduction of board members because that's how we do it here. And actually, we introduce everybody. So I'm going to go from inside the building. Elementary school, and I'm going to start on my far right. And that's not a political statement. I'm going to introduce yourself inside the building. Mr. Guest. Elementary school. And I'm going to start on my
Andy House Superintendent.
I'm Jack Brier, and I chair the Northeast Union Elementary School District.
I'm Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster School Board.
Lynn Morgan, Representative from Athens.
Liz Hardy, Principal Westminster Center School.
And since, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Angela Hardy, yeah, you're Principal at Grafton Elementary School.
I jumped too early. Since you guys can't tell what order you are on the screen, I'm going to ask the major on our board, who is always a major by law from Westminster, I believe.
Hi, hi, folks. This is David in from Westminster. I'm currently suffering a case of COVID, so I'm not there.
Well, my thoughts go with you, and hopefully you've been back boosted and all that stuff.
I have, yes, thank you.
Elise, introduce yourself if you might.
Hi, I'm Elise Manning Sterling, WNEU SD Board Member.
Melissa, can you hear us? All right.
Melissa Carlstrom, I am on the Union Board from Westminster.
All right, and on my understanding of casualties tonight, Ginger, you're next.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Okay, yes, I am Ginger Majowski. I'm a representative from Athens to the school board.
And Jessa, you're up.
I'm Jessa West Clark, and I am from Grafton.
Well, there you go. And I believe, and I see Nicole Barnett is taking notes for us tonight. In fact, TV is streaming us, or recording us, or doing something to us, and I won't ask questions beyond that. Are there adjustments to the agenda or the agendas?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Jessa.
Can you add an item for a statement about COVID guidance from the AOE?
Actually, that's for public comments. Would you like to have that be a new business item? Because I think that's a perfectly reasonable one.
Yes.
Then let's make you a C, shall we?
Perfect.
Right, very good. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? How about on the Westminster side of the house? Oh, I see, wouldn't you go on?
I was wondering if we had any information on the SVAC system.
You know what? We have an item for the boiler issue, but let's expand it to talk about that. That's reasonable. Remind you when we get there that we're doing that. All righty, I'm going to add an item called modification to articles of agreement. And that's, that's pretty much a elementary district discussion, but we really need to have it because I'm having a real panic attack over the fact we haven't moved on that yet. And let's see, I guess that would be it. I don't see anybody with a public comment to make unless somebody has something from a constituent or just random person you met on the street. Yeah, they're not. All right, review and approve minutes from January 13th, 2022. And this is a joint set of minutes, I believe that we've done that. So I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I move that we approve the minutes, January 13th.
All right, are there any comments or note errors noted or any of this stuff? All right, then let's do a roll call. Why don't we start with the, why don't we start with the Unified District Board? So what say you, Elise?
Aye.
How about you, Melissa? All right, Ginger.
Yes.
Jessa is going to have to unmute, but she did. There's a yes there. And Lynn?
Yes.
All right, now rolling around to the Westminster Board. Mr. Major.
Aye.
And
Aye.
That's happening a lot lately. It's the best time.
Okay.
No worries.
All right, well, so we have ayes all the way around. So the minutes are approved. We're now on six. Oh, and we have, by the way, introductions. We're about to introduce someone else. Mr. Guest, introduce yourself, where you're from, and what is your business here?
Charlie Hudson, Westminster School Board.
All right, thank you. If you want to object to the minutes, it's too late. We've done that. And we're on to, we're on to 6A, which is report to principals.
Sure. Not much has changed since our last report. We currently have 155 students, one VTVLC student, and four students who are homeschooling for this year.
And at Grafton Elementary School, we currently have 46 students, one VTVLC student, and five students that are homeschooling.
COVID case update, we, for the year, we have 58 positive confirmed cases. Just in reference, 28 of those cases have happened in January. So it's been a pretty intense month for COVID.
Grafton has had 23 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the year, so we had a few more this week. Winter sports has started at both of our schools. Westminster had our first afternoon last Monday. Students and staff had a great afternoon, either skating, snowshoeing, or cross-country skiing. We're hoping to have another successful afternoon this coming Monday. Also, in this week's Thursday things, families will have an opportunity to check out their child's gear, their snowshoes, or their cross-country skis or skates to use over a very break. And at GES, we had our first day of winter activities last week. Actually, it was the week before last week. We had to postpone because of the, it was really too cold. So students explored animal tracks and spent time snowshoeing. It was lots of fun. I know the students are excited for next time.
Winter concerts are still happening, happening virtually. So Westminster held a watch party where families and watched the concert together for the first time. It was then shared with all families after that.
And at GES, we're going to be doing that exact same thing on February 3rd. We're going to hold our virtual winter concert at 6:00 p.m. Families can join virtually to view the concert, and then we will send that video home to families through email.
So our first half day is coming up. We had eight students from Westminster, three students from Grafton, who are interested in taking advantage of the afternoon enrichment. So we'll be offering outdoor fun in Westminster Center School. We'll also provide an afternoon snack, a winter craft after kids get outside and explore, explore the woods, or animal track, or get outside and do something fun that our after-school program coordinator
And we have NAP coming up at GES and WCS. GES, so just so you know, the NAP is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's like our nation's report card. And GES is doing that on February 11th, and Westminster Center School is doing it on February 15th. And so I pulled a little blurb, just for those who don't know what NAP is. NAP is the largest nationally representative and continuing assessment of what students know and can do in various subjects. NAP is different from our state assessments because it's a common measure of achievement across the country. The assessment is administered by the National Center of Educational Statistics within the U.S. Department of Education. The results are released as the nation's report card, which provides information about student achievement to educators, parents, policymakers, and the public. And at GES, we have three fourth graders participating, and Westminster Center School has 22 fourth graders participating. And that's it. Any questions?
Anybody here?
Sure. Yeah. Could you say, you and I talked about this briefly before this meeting started, but the effectiveness of surveillance testing still for us in Westminster and possibly in Grafton, could you just speak to that?
Yeah, this week, we had just one case that we found out through surveillance testing, and last week, we had six, mostly asymptomatic. We, the students were sent to school, the parents, of course. Had I known, you know, maybe they didn't check their email that morning, or we didn't get the results until the child had already left for school. So that happens quite often, or has been in January, where most of our cases, even adults and students, they're asymptomatic, but we discover it through the surveillance testing or through the take-home tests that students are asked to do before they come to school, or when we test to stay with our rapid tests.
And my concern, and Andy, this, I know when you spoke last night at the WNEU meeting, you spoke to many schools perhaps not getting as much feedback from surveillance testing as we seem to get in this area. So I think it's important still, as a part of our documentation, of how this is being handled. And it's our understanding, and Andy, please speak to this for a moment, that the surveillance testing will end next week.
Yeah, I think next Tuesday is our last one.
Yeah, in fact, I was on a call with the secretary this afternoon, and he was very clear that surveillance testing is a thing of the past. And in fact, the term surveillance is not a word they're using. They, across the state, so when I, last night, when I was referencing, I was referencing what the state is telling us of why they are eliminating surveillance testing is that they, the, what they're seeing across the state is that they're not catching as many through that surveillance testing. And so what the secretary was explaining today was that when they initially rolled that program out, that program was designed for the return to school and to get an understanding. And as the variants have come through, what he was conveying was that they're finding that with, especially with the Omicron, is that the surveillance testing is catching it almost too late. And so that was the purpose of moving away from that because the idea would be that the quick antigen test might have a quicker of finding someone maybe with a positive as opposed to against it. So I think superintendents and nurses across the state are in different places on it and its effectiveness. And I think that we know that it does offer that level of comfort to both parents and staff and of being able to. And what was brought up in that call was specifically where a superintendent said, yeah, but we caught one, you know, just as in lieu of saying. And the fact that essentially what we were hearing is it's not cost-effective. From the AOE perspective is that, you know, to catch one when you could have used antigen tests and maybe caught many more would be more effective. So again, that's what we're, that's what we were hearing in that sense.
I know. Is anybody else? Yeah.
No, on this topic. If there's more on this topic, I have a different topic.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Jack, I've just got a comment, if you don't mind.
Lily.
Just to note that the school where my 14-year-old daughter goes still does surveillance testing, she was tested positive last Thursday, despite the fact the antigen test did not catch her, which we, that we were doing at home. And it took a couple of days later before the antigen tests tested positive for her. That is, the PCR tests are more sensitive. And so just that's how the family, you know, now my wife and I have it, and it's going through the household. But just a note that in that particular case, the surveillance testing was quite useful.
Yeah. I'm just going to chip in with this. I know I said this last time we met, but I'll say it again, and just for the record. The antigen test is a cruder test, is a, is a, it is provisionally approved, it's not a final approval, because there were questions about its sensitivity. It throws about 15% false negatives, which is a lot. So the pattern has been that people that have both is that they test positive on a PCR about two days before they test positive on a rapid antigen test. And the secretary has had this pointed out to him multiple times by multiple medical authorities. So to hear this nonsense about how it's more cost-effective, I just, you know, for the, for that one family that ends up with a kid in the hospital, I really do wonder just how cost-effective they'll think it is to cease this. The one piece of news we may have, we might have a passive way of testing the entire schools. Now, it's premature to talk about that, but there is, there's a conversation happening with some of the developers of these tests. And people may know that Dartmouth developed a system where they can test entire buildings and entire campuses and entire cities. And it's fairly well-known as a way of monitoring what's going on in a facility. We're pretty small for this type of application, but we're going to have to be asking some questions, just information gathering at this point. I'll see if that's something that can be brought into our local systems. I'll send you more once we've had a, once Andy and I have had a conversation with these folks. So, and as a disclosure, they're not a, they're not a contracie of mine, but they are a contracie of one of my business partners, but there's no benefit to him or to me. And I'm hoping that this might be a freebie in any case, we'll just have to find out. But it's better than just wishful thinking and hoping it'll go away, because if you're using the rapid antigen test, if anything, the numbers will look artificially low. And so there's that.
So I just, I just want to finish this for now, but try to put it in common sense terms for families and the schools. And so what's happening now is we're moving according to the state guidance to test at home. And so that's the idea that all children, all families will be sent those kits if someone is not vaccinated and they show up. Only with the adults, yeah.
What happens is if they're unvaccinated, they are tested at school, and then they are given tests to fulfill their five days, to test every morning. If they are vaccinated, they might be given one test to be taken on their fifth day.
What would have, would that child have symptoms in order to be given a?
No. It's just, yeah, just because they've been, exactly. So they're not testing if they haven't been identified as a close contact. So not testing every day.
A close contact who is vaccinated, does that child stay home for five days?
No, no, no one.
So the idea is that
Go through it, please.
The idea is not to keep kids home. And the idea is for kids to come to school. The pivot to the test to stay, to the home, test at home, was the burden that it's putting on schools and the ability to even maintain in logistics. And sometimes, like in our middle school, we might have 70 kids that we've got to test. I mean, that's a huge lift. And so I think that it was a response on the AOE's part of hearing superintendents say, we can't get this, like, this is difficult. And so I think that that was part of the shift is to move away from schools being responsible for this part of maintenance of the pandemic, to parents being responsible for that piece. And to, and the secretary had said numerous times in meetings is to let schools get back to the business of being schools and let school nurses get back to the, you know, what they've been, you know, doing, you know, prior to the pandemic. So that's, that's the shift in that, in that protocol. Everything comes down to the ability to procure supplies. And if we don't have enough supplies for test to home or test at home, then we are trying to see if we can preserve tests and be able to do tests to stay. Because just as Liz was saying, if that, if that vaccinated student, we can't give them one test, it's a packet of two. And so we have to give them two. And even though they need one, we have to give two. And so one of the things the secretary talked about today is some districts were doing like preemptive and sending home lots of tests with kids that didn't even need them, but it was just their way of addressing it. And they've come back and actually told schools they cannot do that, and that we're supposed to be following the protocol of giving the five tests type of thing for those, for unvaccinated or if there's multiple families. You know, if you've got, if you've got siblings and you've got to give out enough, you're giving out 10 all the time, you know, because it's always double of what you're giving out. And so the last case would be if we end up with no tests, we may have to revert back down to quarantining kids and telling kids that we're quarantining, you know. And so we're trying to figure out ways to not get to that point.
Yeah, Andy, a lot of our response to some of her positives, especially last for the past, this past month, has been so intense. It's really dependent on our supply and what type of tests we have more of. And we have a lot of test-to-stay tests that, so we were using those at some cases. Some cases, it makes sense to send the kits home. So it's not as, you know, one-stop-shopping type of response. It really depends on what supply we have in order to
And we don't know on a week-to-week basis what our supplies are, because the supplies come, we put an order, and I think I mentioned this last night, we put an order in, we don't know what we're going to get until we, it shows up on our door. It's not like we have a closet full of tests just sitting around, unfortunately. We are, we constantly keep hearing about lamp testing, which is another type of test that is, again, the secretary validates the effectiveness of the PCR test versus the antigen test. So he does say that obviously, you know, that it is more effective in identifying. And what he was talking about today is that the lamp test has the same predictability or close to it as the PCR, but doesn't have you, you don't have to send it out. So it's a, I, from my understanding, it's much more like the antigens as you get the result right there, as opposed to sending it out. And so that's where they said they are accumulating supplies at this time. So we haven't seen them yet, but we're being told that that's going to be for
Lamp tests are very cool because they actually do the targeted genetic implication in a little plastic thing. But as far as I know, they're still like $70 to $100 apiece.
Yeah, but the Health Department is recommending them, but that doesn't tell you whether you can get them or not. I see David's hand up, I think.
Yeah, just to point out what we all know, which is this isn't a straight road. My daughter's school requires before a kid with a test positive come back, that they have two negative tests on day five and six. She got a negative test on day five, she got a positive day on day six. They said, okay, wait, wait a week and come back, and, which means a whole nother bunch of tests. So what we, what we think of as being one or two tests in many cases, including my family, is multiple ones.
Go ahead.
I just, I just want to, one of the things they are signaling is, and part of the discussion today was, like, removal of masks and, and students being able to, you know, that as long as a student is asymptomatic, that they come to school. And so where I equate that to is in my mind is, you know, living in New Hampshire, in New Hampshire, there is no close contact tracing, there is no testing, there is, it's, students come to school, and if you're sick, you stay home.
Wait for your die in all senses.
So, so there's, there's some signaling, there's some signaling that that may be on the horizon.
Well, Joanne Conroy's latest message to employees at Dartmouth Hitchcock is that they are up by a few beds, and that they prefer not to have to be sending people. And so from their perspective, anyway. Jessa, you got your hand up, and Charlie, you might have had yours, I don't know. Jessa, go for it.
Well, Andy, what Andy just said, we'll talk about later. But, so I pulled up the FDA advisory about the usefulness of the rapid antigen tests and the rate of false positives, which they're still reviewing in children and expect to release next week, false negatives. But the British Medical Journal study from the University of Manchester with pediatric use of rapid antigen testing in schools in the UK, they found that the sensitivity for symptomatic children was about 72%. For asymptomatic children, it drops down to about 56%, but still the false negative rate is very, very low. Or the false positive rate, sorry. But the rapid antigen tests with the Omicron variant, especially those that are cheaper and faster to get, which I'm sure are the ones we have, only test for a small piece of genetic code, which doesn't contain the Omicron variants. So I don't know what Secretary French has to say to that, that we're dropping from a test that's 99% accurate to one that's 56% accurate, but I would like to hear that.
Just final point, and I know, you know, we're fairly ineffective besides complaining about it, but the reality is that we've had real problems, particularly at the Grafton Elementary School, assuring parents that going to school is safe. We have, we have sort of record, we've had record numbers of kids that are homeschooling, seeking alternatives, and that affects the, that affects us fiscally, affects us operationally. And I just don't know if there's appreciation that, that the viability of small schools is particularly vulnerable to sort of careless custodial, because, you know, custody of, responsibility to make sure our buildings and our classrooms are safe. And I, it does, it does stress me to hear this stuff being sort of blown off when given answers that you know aren't scientifically defensible.
I know we're trying to close the subject. I want to acknowledge that Andy is in a difficult position, he's getting guidance from the state. We as a board are objecting to some of the guidance you're getting. And so we'll just make that statement and be clear about it. We just all need to pay attention to all of this and keep hearing from the principals and the nurses what's really going on in our communities and do the best to assure people, again, that we're, we're hearing, we're listening, we're watching, and we'll take every action we can to continue to do everything to keep people safe. And one other comment you made last night, Andy, of all the things we're objecting to about changes in the state guidance, one of those is the fact that we, we were prohibited this year from using an extensive hybrid approach or remote learning approach. Could not have that supported, given the Could not have that supported, given the lack of state of emergency in in Vermont. And so there've been a number of decisions made that 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 we're troubled by. Having said that, overall, I mean, the schools are happy and healthy. The teachers are doing extraordinary things. So are the parents, so are you, the principal. So I don't want the public to think things are not joyful because they really are. There are so many good things going on. We're just doing our best to try to stay on top of guidance that some of us think is not in the best interest of everybody. That's, I'll stop with that.
Charlie, you want to swap something else?
We've heard from my comment on this topic, I have a totally unrelated topic.
Well, well, this is, if it's still related to what this topic is, which is principals report. I think you're more than.
From the principals as well.
This is right.
I just wanted to follow up on the neat testing. I was interested that the numbers are really low. So how is that, is it a voluntary test or?
It's only for fourth grade.
Oh, just fourth grade?
Yeah, only fourth graders.
And number of them? So you already got eight fourth graders?
I have, I have twenty-two fourth graders. So they, you have four.
Oh, I see. That's why the numbers, I like the credit.
Yeah.
Do they also take it in eights as well? Is that, is that a thing that you get fourth and eighth or no, just four?
You you take it at multiple grades, you don't have a choice. If you, if you are, if you are chosen. You know, because I tried to opt out of it because of everything we're doing. You know, just it's one more thing we need. And and I was politely told, no. And 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 so I, we've done, I I've done name at high schools. So it it and it, so it happens at varying levels of, I don't know off the top of my head what grade levels, but it could be four, eight.
That makes sense, fourth, eighth, yeah.
Well, we have on that, we had talked to different points about learning loss and doing testing to evaluate your learning loss. And then Andy's report about the summer said that programming was going to focus on learning loss. So I wonder, has that testing happened across the board, kids to assess learning loss from last year?
Yeah, so we use math testing probably is probably the most indicative because it shows their learning trajectory from before COVID through all the recovery. So that is done three times a year. So it's fall, we're just, Westminster's actually taking that this week.
Have you, have you reported any results to us yet that I've missed?
I haven't, no, I haven't, yeah.
That's coming up at some point.
Yeah, definitely.
Is it a big issue or a small issue?
Yeah, it's a snapshot, you know, it's, it's a one test snapshot into a student's learning. So you have to understand that. And I think across the board that I think we've said this before, yes, there was obviously learning loss with COVID when kids returned. Last spend this slow progression to get kids back. I think there has been massive gains if I think about last fall to now. But I can report on the overall growth. Yeah, sure.
And how long does it take when they're actually doing math testing or when they're doing this national assessment? What's it physically look like? How long does it take for the kids?
Obviously, it depends. Do you want to? Yeah, I mean, it it depends on the student. Some finish pretty quickly, you know, within a half an hour. And some can take thirty hours, maybe a little more depending.
Obviously, not one sitting.
You know, sometimes like they'll, we'll need to give them breaks. You know, there's, I think that the math one is forty-two questions and the E L A one is fifty-one or fifty-two.
I think you average around thirty to forty-five minutes. That's what I would think.
Yeah, we give them breaks and snacks and if it's taken them too long, we just stop. The window's really big, like I think we have until April.
Yeah.
It's not like a huge, like, get this done right now. Right, it's not time.
We try to reduce the stress.
Yeah, we're trying to just like schedule it this week so that it can get done. And of course, our younger students don't take that that long, right? Our kindergartners aren't taking a half hour, right? More like fifteen minutes for them.
One of my improvised policies for making sure we have full discussion is, and I don't, when, you know, when we have these hybrids, if if people that are remote wish to speak up, I urge you to just speak up because I can't allow C hands. And if you don't, if you don't have a question or don't speak up, I might do what I'm about to do, which is to survey you and ask you each if you have any questions, which I'm about to do, starting with Elise. Do you have any questions, Elise? All right, I I just always worry that good manners keep people on the sidelines. And having no good manners myself, I try to lead by example.
Thank you for asking, but yeah, no, I don't have any questions.
Melissa?
No.
Right, Ginger?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
What you, Melissa?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Anybody who have, who's not up? Yes, Lynn, any questions? All right, then we are going to move on. We have committee updates and we actually need to put this on the agenda for the next meeting because the process for policy has been in recent years that the S U Policy Committee does their magic, runs it before the S U. And then after that is done, runs it back to individual boards. And the S U passed a bunch of these yesterday. And we need to bring them before you. And Andy just, and Nicole, just to note, we should have those in in printed form and distributed to everybody so we can act on them in our next meeting. I don't, I can't think of any other committees, and they've been all bit more of them since COVID. But one of them is is facilities or buildings and grounds, as we call it. And that is going to be an item as an eight A, and that'll be more of a show and tell. I brought my trusty iPad so that I can show all of our remote folks what that system looks like if they're at all curious, and I think they might be. So I guess that moves us on to eight A. Boiler issue, what boiler issue? The one here, what's wrong with the boiler here? Will, what happened Saturday?
So, please excuse me because I am, I am a principal, I'm an educator. I am not an H VAC person, but
What a shock.
I can understand how things move through things and make air come out. From Gary and Jim, on Saturday, when our night custodian was hearing mops on Saturday, so when he was hearing, he noticed that there was not any hot water. And so that prompted Gary to come out and just sort of take a peek at like what was going on. So the actuator motor, so Gary brought me in there and showed me there's a motor that opens up the vents on the wall. That failed and the vent stayed open. So the freezing cold air came in and froze the pipes, which caused no hot water.
Right.
For a period. But then when Gary got here, the hot water was on, thinking that the pipe had broke between Bob saying something and Gary getting here. And then that's why there was then hot water again, because the water was flowing. Okay, so they ordered a new one of those motors so that that vent will open and close as it's supposed to. There were some exhaust fumes from a rope gasket inside, unrelated to that other motor thing. That was fixed, so there is no exhaust, so there hasn't been a sink in school, it doesn't sink right now. So that was all fine. And they fixed the broken pipe. And that should take care of that. The motor will get replaced. And then Jim came out and took a look and met with Gary. And his report is that the current system keeps up acceptably with demands of the building places and the heating system. So he doesn't believe that there's a rush to put in a new one, but suggests a more thought out approach to replacing the boiler, the circular pumps, the air eliminator, and perhaps an upgrade to the building management system to monitor, control and log the functions of the heating. Then there's a question of, you know, modernizing it, could we put it under S R and that sort of thing? And then there's photos here, so nothing needed to go through insurance. I have talked to insurance, but nothing did need, there's no, there's no, you know, aside, I think we have a five thousand dollar deductible. And this shouldn't reach that amount. We don't have an invoice from them right now because they're not done with the work. But there's some pictures of, you know, the box that had some filters in it that got wet, but that's fine. The floor is dry, it didn't, you know, do anything wild and crazy to the floors, so.
The reason why I, you know, want to make sure that we talked about this is I will not claim a lot of expertise on boilers, although we replaced the one at Main Street Arts. We replaced the one at my, at my home. I've done about four of these in the last two years. So I'm getting to know a little bit enough to be dangerous. And the concerns I had were that the face of the of the firing chambers notably corroded. And we have acidic water here, as we all know, anyway. And when the gas, when that cavity gasket goes, usually the reason it goes is because the firing chamber itself has damage. So because of that, what I'd like, and and because that makes me very uncomfortable about the long term. You know, the last thing you want is a firing chamber fail because basically you have a fire. And I think it would be useful to have a professional from from one of the burner companies take a full look at that system and make sure.
It was inspected and serviced on October twentieth.
This year, and they didn't, and they didn't have any problem with the way that sucker looked.
Eighty-five percent efficiency.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm.
But originally I had said this week to Jim, get three quotes.
Yeah, I I kind of would like to because that, but that that venting that you had in the back, that's triggered by, that's usually triggered by, by.
Are you talking about this, that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's usually triggered if there are issues with exhaust or with with.
Well, every time the system kicks on, every time it fires, this motor goes on and opens that vent.
Right, but it was.
But this motor failed, so that vent stayed open.
But it's also tends to be, those usually tend to be, have a trigger on them. That does not have a trigger, it's an automatic and doesn't trigger due to C O levels or, or, yeah.
No, it's every time. Because while we were in there, because there's a different heating system over the gym.
Right.
That one kicked on and the vent, the other vent opened for that one to vent out and it like got colder in there, you know. And I think that's why this heating system, there's not pictures of it, but it's so insulated because that then lets cold air in, seems like a strange.
There are, the design of that's a little funky, but it's not off the side.
Yeah.
So I don't know who to ask about this. If Jim thinks it's, you know, my my working assumption was that we were looking at.
I mean, we could get a professional out to, you know, see, I mean, it was, it was serviced.
Yeah, I would, I would really kind of like to if that's acceptable to my colleagues.
I would recommend at least someone look at it and give us, you know, what are we looking at? Are we looking at, hey, this thing's got five more years or this thing, you know?
Well, the thing is, I don't, I don't want to have a, we can nurse it along. And I also don't want to have a boiler failure. And, you know, because this is, this isn't so bad enough that this happens in somebody's home. But when it's the school that's, and and people aren't in the building all the time. Do we have, what is the alarming that we have for?
I don't think that there is, and that's one of the things that Jim had written is building management system to monitor, control, log the functions of the heat plant.
Yeah, I think at the very least we need to do that because that makes, because I I'm actually sort of surprised we we can ensure the building without it, to be honest with you.
This might be a good job for Efficiency Vermont in addition to a couple of local contractors because they do consulting on getting the most efficient furnace you can for your building.
That's a mighty good idea. Jesse, do you, have you dealt with them? I mean, who, who?
Yeah, I looked into them because when you're building a house, if you get them involved in your design process before it goes to the architect, you can get a six thousand dollar rebate.
Elise, did I see your stuff or were you just gesturing? Okay, that's fine. Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I've only dealt with home furnaces because they're always vented up through your chimney. I don't understand how they're venting with louvers that are letting cold air that seems productive.
So my understanding is there, there is a, there's a stack, you know, an exhaust stack. And there's a gasket where the stack meets the the actual boiler. That gasket failed. And so when that gasket was failure, that allowed fumes into the room. That's what triggers the motor to vent that room. And so, and so because the gasket had failed, if the motor was overworked, and so then it failed, which it unfortunately failed open. Well, maybe good or bad, right? You know, like it failed open. If it, if it had failed in the summertime, we would never known about it.
Yeah.
But, you know, because it, because in in the sense that we wouldn't have a frozen bike potentially. So so that's what was explained to me. I don't know. More was explained to you, Angie, that, but that's what was explained to me on the system.
I I thought that it went on every time because it does it for the, for the gym one, too.
Well, then that suggests that maybe we need to have a.
It is a separate room.
Yeah.
Like it's a separate, it's got a door.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're not like letting cold air in where like the thermostat's going to get, trigger the cold and go on. But it isn't like a separate room, it's cold in there, chilly.
It's got water pipes in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 that was the other thing is that you can tell there's been a lot of fumes in there because if you look at the pipes, you know, there's inflation in the pipes, if you look on the pipes and replace all that insulation, insulation looks mildly greasy. But it's been, there's at least enough there that when you put your hand on it, you notice it, at least I did. And so.
So do all schools have it set up so they're in that separate room under fumes that are always coming out?
Well, but people have boiler rooms as a, as a failsafe because you want to, you want to have some wider defense if the system fails. And usually you've got some sort of specific type of, some sort of fire resistant material around that. It isolates that room.
So like at the high school, we have a boiler room. And when they built it, they put the electrical panel in the boiler room.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so over these years, since, you know, nineteen sixty-nine, heat and and moisture and electricity, they don't like to play. And so what's happened is one of the switches, or it might not be the whole electrical panel, but there's at least a a switch in there. And that switch will will trigger the generator to come on, which, you know, is a backup generator for the, for the building. Well, because it's been corroded and whatnot, it doesn't always work. And we're actually working to get it fixed right now, but as an example, like, like, so, yes, every, every school has a boiler room if they have a boiler. Westminster has a wood chip boiler. And so they've got quite a large area where where that, you know, you know, the boiler is really small for the building. It's amazing. But, you know, so everyone has one and and you do vent because obviously you could have fumes at any time. And so it's possible that it comes on every time just to make sure we're venting, but if it gets frozen open.
Yeah, okay.
Well, anyway.
It looks like Jesse's hands.
Yeah, Jesse, sorry.
Hi. Just to make a note, not to throw Ricky under the bus, but he can rig up a internet connected temperature sensor using a Raspberry Pi for like sixty bucks total.
You could do that. That's kind of like the the homebrew solution.
Well, I'm wondering if.
But it's, it's faster and easier because if you go with a company, it's going to take them a number of weeks to install it and it'll be warmer by then.
The question is, is it faster and easier if you get staffed and actually it's staff, staff time to actually do it? And that means you got to, you got to, you got to, you know, there's some jury rigging, you know.
A great job for a high schooler in a technology program.
Only we have that.
Well, you know, that's actually, we got any, we were going to say, we got any would be engineers in our senior project team? That might be a, that might be a dandy thing, but I don't, I think it's a little way. in our senior project team, that might be a, that might be a dandy thing, but I don't, I think it's a little way in the ear to.
We got a Python guru right now. It's awesome. She's, she's all over it.
Well, have a chat. Um, I, 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 with, can, do I need a resolution to have authorized you? I don't think I do that.
I, I've already sent an email to Mr. DeBelle to work with Angie to get someone out there to at least look at it, whether it's Vermont, Efficiency Vermont, or let's get someone out there.
Right.
And so we can get some solid answers on what we need.
I believe Jessa and I and Lynn constitute our, um, our B, our Buildings and Grounds Committee, although I'd have to look and I'm not 100% sure on this. And, uh, and Melissa might be on it too. I can't remember. Yes, she is. So if, uh, once that's happened, if you could swing them a copy of whatever the finding is and we can act on it, if we're going to act on it. And it's something we need to do sooner rather than later, I'd like us to do it sooner rather than later. I just want to have the school close because we have a problem. Yeah. All righty, peachy. Um, uh, there was a, who had, there was another issue and I can't remember what it was.
Just on COVID.
Jessa, uh, you, this is a new bit of side of you. Want to, uh, talk to your item?
Um, yes. Uh, I already talked to Jack with this and all, I will take the publicity hit for it. So I will start with the motion and then we can discuss it. Um, to send a letter to the Secretary of Education, Mr. Dan French, stating that we, the W N E U E S D, will find unacceptable any recommendation or guidance issued from the A O E to keep COVID positive students who are minimally or asymptomatic in school. We will not stand for nor allow intentional and avoidable exposure to our families, staff, or the greater community. That's it. Two sentences. Discuss.
Can you just say it one more time again so I can listen to it? It's like, and really hear everything?
Yeah, sorry. I had to use my phone. My laptop.
I was trying to write it when you wrote it and I just couldn't keep up.
Okay. We, the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District will find unacceptable any recommendation or guidance issued by the A O E to keep COVID positive students who are minimally or asymptomatic in school. We will not stand for nor allow intentional and avoidable exposure to our families, staff, or the greater community.
So that is the, Nicole, did you get that?
I'll send it to you, Nicole.
Now.
Thank you.
Uh, now this is a unified district resolution. Uh, this kind of came up a few minutes before this evening. And, um, have a chance to talk to Cheryl about whether this is something she would sign up for or, uh, do as well on behalf of her district. But that's, that's what you think.
That's your comments. You know, I, I would say that we actually don't have the authority at this point uh, to submit a, or a resolution of that kind. Our authority right is limited in financial and personnel matters. However, I think we could make a statement in principle, uh, in, in support of it after you guys discuss it and decide what your action might be. Let's ask Charlie and David what they think about, about that, if we might, or maybe see to discuss.
Well, well, let's, let's do that quickly and then we'll have discussion. And I think we kind of chewed on this earlier. So I think I've got a sense of a formal resolution. I think might be useful. Uh, David, you've got your hand up, I think?
I'll, I'll just note that the Union Elementary School Board is the one that has the power at this point for, uh, the schools, Athens, Grafton, Westminster, all included until the end of June, at which point, of course, circumstances will be different. So, uh, I think that the, um, that's, that's where this motion belongs.
You guys could certainly sign a letter of, or a note of support and attach it to any resolution if it passes.
Right.
And that might be the way to handle that. I'm going to start with my colleague Lynn. What do you think?
So let me just get clear.
Yes.
Mr. French is bringing down a pipe that we have to leave students that we know are COVID students in the classrooms?
Possibly. They're thinking about it.
Is whether or not, you know, a couple of chippy resolutions from school boards might be sufficient to, uh, to discourage the temptation to go that direction.
Yeah. Well, that seems totally stupid to do.
I think, I think I got the sense of your vote on this when it comes up. Um, Elise, what do you think?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Um, no, I'm, I'm in support of that, uh, that motion. I, the state seems to keep going backwards from like, um, when we were really shut down and, you know, doing well to keep COVID away. And I know it's a new variant, but this isn't the time we should be just, you know, letting everything happen. They're just like, I think it, it seems like they're just kind of giving up and it's like, you know? Um, and I, I don't think that's, that's not good at all. So I support this.
Melissa?
Um, I'm just wondering if, like, when I hear unavoidable exposure to our greater community and things like that, I just think of a jillion different things that different people could tune into. And I wonder if this needs some specific examples of things that we feel like are happening right now that shouldn't be. Like, I just wonder if it's too vague or if that's what we want to do is since being vague. Like, do we want specific examples of things that we don't like that are happening?
No, it would just be in regards to the fact that it would be completely avoidable, that exposure by not leaving COVID positive kids in school. That's what I meant.
So these are kids that have been asymptomatic for five days or, but tested positive, but are allowed to return?
Um, or kids that are minimally symptomatic. They tossed around that. So like.
So, but that's not happened yet. So this is proactive.
Happened yet. This is, um, an idea that was tossed around between the governor's office and Dan French from the Agency of Education about changing the guidance. And I think it's in response to the lack of available tests. That they're just like, no, screw it. They can stay in school. Um, and I know our parents would not find that acceptable, a vast majority of them.
So this is proactive. So it's not saying this is, okay.
Because we don't want them to issue that as guidance and we would not be supportive of that. And frankly, I would not plan on following it.
Our, our history, that would be almost inevitable.
Well, speaking of, I also would like our West, if we vote to move forward and send this resolution, I would like to have the Westminster board member sign it with us. While we're going ahead and, and putting a thorn in his side, let's add that to it as well.
He would, he would be disappointed if he didn't get it. The, um, I, yeah, I, I'm Melissa, I think this is really preemptive. Um, because a, a lot of companies too, suddenly, including the medical centers, are really ought to know better. Uh, nursing homes have been kicking around this idea, well, gee, we don't have tests. So I guess we just pretend it's all okay. Uh, very few, thank God, have done this, but some states, Tennessee, Florida, have actually gone down that pathway. And, you know, we, we would just want to encourage our, our leadership in Montpelier not to do that. I think that's the intent of this. Um, does anyone else have any further questions about this? Um, you know, rude comments or other observations of any kind?
Are you looking to go back in or not?
Well, I think what, what, the, the idea here is that we will pass a resolution and we will, we would, you know, ask you or encourage you to consider signing it. But it would be entirely your discretion.
I'm wondering if you'd entertain a friendly amendment.
Go for it.
I think the wording could perhaps do a little bit of work on the wording. Anytime you said, we will not stand for, and we have no power to do anything about anyway. I, I, I wonder if there's another way of saying that.
Strongly object.
We strongly object. We would urgently encourage you not to report any such. We will not stand for, what are we going to do? How do we call it?
I'm willing to defy the Secretary of Education and make him come down here and make us do otherwise. But I don't know how you all feel about that.
We defied the Secretary of Education 70 times in the last couple of years. I think you'd be disappointed. You go ahead, Andy.
So, um, the only caution, I, 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 I support, um, I, I, I support your position, Jessa. So I'm not, my only caution is kind of on the heels of what Charlie is saying is if we're going to say, like, when we count student days and when we're looking at, at, at that piece, how are we going to address if a student hasn't been in school? Are we going to count that as, as absences? How, how, you know, it's like, it, I don't know how that's going to, what position that's going to put us in. Um, and so I, I'm just trying to think that out quickly in my head. May not be able to have an answer right now, but I mean, the secretary has said numerous times that schools are either open or closed and there is no such thing as remote. Um, so.
We figure it out many closes.
Well, also saying that the legislature and superintendents and school unions and parent teacher groups are saying, just wait a cotton pick a minute here. Uh, I, 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 I think that since this is basically a state, a philosophical statement of objection that it doesn't have the force of compelling you to do something in contravention of state rights. You just don't like them. Uh, that at least it's important that somebody in the state of Vermont says, we don't like them. Or we don't like this, we don't like this idea and we strongly suggest you not consider it, which is, but this.
Well, I think, I mean, I would go further and say, no, we're not going to do it. And I think with the backing, we'll have enough backing of parents. I think we'll have the ability to write excused absences and make them come, challenge them. Because it wouldn't be entire classrooms. It would be mostly individuals.
Well, at this point.
And I think if it, if it comes to that and they do issue that guidance, um, we can deal with it at that point. But I, we're not going to keep anybody's elementary school kid in summer school because they missed too many days for being sick.
Well, so with that thought, uh, let me just quick kind of, actually, let me poll people. Or, uh, I'm going to start with, um, with Elise because I'm looking right at her here. Stop the screen, Elise. I can't help it. Uh, what do you think, Elise? Are you inclined to go with this?
Um, I am willing to go with it. I do agree that maybe the language could be changed. Um, I, you know, I'm fine with kind of in your face, but I think it's, I think we're going to do what we want to do eventually anyway. And I think if we just word it so that we're, we're not in support of this and, you know, um, further discussions are needed and, but that we will, we will not, we do not support this. So anyway, whatever language kind of works best that we're not, you know, totally in the face, just.
Some needs for tweaking of language. Uh, uh, and I heard some from, from, um, from Charlie a moment ago. How about you, Melissa? Would you, I mean, because there are some things we can do.
I like the idea of saying that as a community, we're not excited about new things that we're hearing about. I don't think, I don't know how I feel about stating that we're going to dig our heels in as, I don't know about the legalities of us telling kids they can't come to school if the state says they can.
Um.
Like that feels like, oh, not our lane. I don't know.
The state leaves it invent intentionally vague when it comes to other illnesses too. Um, we can let kids, you know, during, we let kids with the flu come to school as long as they don't have a fever. Um, things like that. It's, it's sort of left up to the nurses. And I'm kind of fine.
Temperature of 100.4. If someone has nausea, if they've had, you know, they can't make it to the bathroom with diarrhea. There's pretty clear cut policies, I was thinking. Right?
Yeah, but with a kid with a temperature of 102 will let in, but not 104?
No, we can't let 102. It's 100.4. And that's an early add and I think it's lower in the schools.
Um.
It's 100, I think, for the, the public school is the current one.
I think it's 100.4, Melissa. I think.
Is it 100.4 the first one? Okay. Cause we do have policies.
We do, but we let the nurse, some of those are very subjective.
Well, then maybe we want consistency with that. I mean, that's our fault and our nurses, if they're not sticking to the.
Kind of, I, I want to, I don't want to discourage this interlocutor, sorry, but I do want Andy to speak to it and I have a thought as a way of dealing with, cutting the knot if we do too.
Thank you. And, and sorry, David, I, I think with some of this, where the complexity comes in is a student can come into school and maybe have a temperature. Um, unless we have permission from the parent, we can't test the parent, the child um, to see if they have COVID. So, you know, so then the nurse just has to use their, their professional judgment to send that child home. Just like, you know, and, and we could then fall back on our 24 hour rule with, with no fever and whatnot. And I want to believe that the vast majority of parents, if not all our parents, do the right thing. But I would be remiss if I didn't, as a parent, have said, did I, once in a while, give my child Tylenol so they could go to school because I needed to go to work? And, and so, um, it, it is plausible that in some school district, in some school in the state of Vermont, that a parent give their child, you know, some medicine and send them to school that day. And, and we might have a COVID child. But essentially the signaling that we're getting is to treat it like it's the flu. So much like you're talking about, Melissa, and, and, and Jessa, it's, that's the message that, and the signaling we are getting is to treat COVID just like it's the flu and, and the conversation is around an endemic as opposed to a pandemic. So, um, I don't know if that helped or.
It did not. Because it's not endemic yet as much as people are treating it that way. The worldwide authorities on such things are still considering it very much a pandemic and not reaching endemic stage.
I agree with you, Jessa.
One, one possible thought would be to have a resolution to the effect that, you know, to state Jessa's, uh, language in total, but to authorize the board chair to draft a letter stating the, uh, our district's objection to any future policy of that type. Uh, and, and that might give us a way of, you know, saying, well, as a matter of principle, you've got this resolution as a letter to the, to the state. We're saying that we object without getting into whether or not we're going to defy the state and do all this other good fun stuff. Uh.
I, I think that, that nails it, Jack. I would be willing to accept to, uh, to further add an additional sentence to the motion saying, you know, the resolution as read and authorize the board chair to draft a letter to the Agency of Education expressing our feelings on this matter. How's that?
I think that would be a way of dealing with it. I, I'm, you know, I have some truly good luck writing, writing letters that they pay attention to from time to time in Montpelier. Because when they fought us, they've lost a few times recently. So, I'd be happy with doing that, and if necessary, I might just touch base with Pietro or one of our lawyers, just see just how far I can be on it. And we'll try to get it out this, early next week, at the latest. It's acceptable to everybody. Perhaps we can have a roll call on that.
The motion actually already said that Jessa moved to send a letter to the Secretary of Education. So, you're just kind of further clarifying.
Basically, that there's a resolution, there's a drafted letter. The letter will go note the resolution and will also say, you know, this is, we urge people not to consider that, and maybe I'll even CC the head of the Education Department Legislature. Because that's all those things to do. And send one to Susan Small here in America, you know, just because I think it's a way of making certain, you know, right now, there's no, there's no media here tonight. So, we'll try to help that along by sending, CCing a few people.
So, do you want to call for it?
Yes. So, the, yes, the resolution and authorize the chair to draft a letter to the Agency of Education and anyone else CCs it, expressing our objections.
Right. With that being the motion, I'm going to start from in-house here. Lynn?
Yes.
All right. Now, Alyssa, please, yes, Lisa. Melissa, Melissa, sorry. I'm having, Elise, Melissa, it's, I don't know what's wrong. I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to claim it's flipped over from surgery the other day, but I know it isn't. Elise?
Yes.
And Jessa?
Yes.
The three of you are going to have to change your names so that doesn't happen. Who are we missing? Is that everybody?
No, you didn't get me, Jack.
Sorry. See, you're the bottom of the screen, and this is what happened.
Yeah, I've been listening, and I think that the state is out of line, and I agree with the resolution. So, I say yes.
You very much. So, we have a passed resolution.
I'd like to offer a motion that the Westminster School Board sign on, co-sign the letter or endorse it in principle, something along that.
I would just add your signature to the resolution, or you have everybody do that, and I'll send a letter and we'll do that.
Let's make sure this board agrees with that, with the motion.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Sorry.
David?
I support the resolution.
All right.
And Charlie does, and I do.
Then we are squintedly moving along. AP, one topic. If you look at your paychecks, your list of paychecks in December, you'll notice one that wasn't there, because this board was given authority to, last year, to declare a stipend pay for board members for the current term. And you know what we never did? We never did that. So, what are you worth, people? What should be, what, the traditional stipends for the old ASHRAP board, where, back when we didn't meet every other day, were $400 a year, and $450 for the chair. I think it's 500, and $450 and 500 at the high school. And I believe Westminster, you guys have traditionally had a number higher than that.
David might remember that.
David, were you 5 and 7, or were you 7 and 1,000?
I think it was 7 and 1,000 most recently.
So, I think, go ahead, Elise.
But does 800 sound right, and then 1,000 or 1,050? I remembered 800.
Oh, you mean for Westminster. You just remembered.
Yeah, in the past, I think, yeah. Okay, that's it.
All right. Well, I think it's important that we settle that item. And I just, you know, you, the West Board can, as part of your, you know, reorganization set one, but I know that the, that the UEST board has been a year where we have talked about doing it and never quite got around to it. And last year, we, as part of our budget belt tightening, voluntarily went without, and Jessa was the one that proposed that, or maybe she has decided to forget that. What do you, what do you all want to do? What's fair? And Jessa, since you thought we weren't worth anything last year, what do you think we're worth this year?
Do we wait till the, till the March meeting with the, the new board?
Well, this is, the way that the language passed actually rather robustly last year to let us set the rate for this current year. And with, you know, I'm not anticipating that we're going to do anything to abuse that trust. It did put it in our, in our hands. So, I think that we should, we should make a statement and, and set a number that we do for this year and for next year, and if people object to it, they can, they can run for office. It would actually be a good thing. Filt your boots with one stone.
Yeah, I think last year, we had, we had to find some serious money in the budget, and we agreed to forego stipends.
And so, but, as I say, the, assuming that we become, that we're not meeting every other week, or every week, the way we have been the last two years, and things get to something that looks normal, what seems reasonable compensation for, for the Unified Elementary School District?
For some reason, you said 400. I thought it was 500 at one point.
Oh, 500.
I could be wrong.
Ginger? All right, I've got two people saying 500, so I'm, I'm fine with 500, and, you know, maybe.
That was, that was my understanding when I signed on, was 500.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm going to make a motion that the, that the stipend to be paid for board members of the Wyndham Northeast Unified, or Union Elementary School District be $500 per year. And so, there you go.
Add something, and then add to that for your chair, or somebody.
People think the chair, well, maybe people, maybe their chair, maybe they want the chair to take less. I don't know. $499?
$750.
Well, some, you know, the reality is that I'm serving one more year because, or three, not necessarily a chair, because that's a vote of the board, but, you know, this, no, it might be one of, oh, might not be any of you guys, because I haven't seen a whole lot of you sign up to be, to run again. But what about the chair? Does the chair get anything for trouble, for trouble? Boy, death asylum on that. I guess, I'm perfectly high, fine with 500 a year, just across the board.
I think, Jack, you deserve more than that.
I have no complex interest on this one, so I say 750.
750 for the chair.
Yeah, I think definitely more than what we get.
You know, 20 hours a week, 40 hours a week, divided by 750 for 52 weeks is still pennies an hour, but it's more than zero.
All right. I will entertain a motion that the compensation for the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District be $500 per annum for the chair heading.
Remember, $50 per?
Per member, where the chair being compensated at a rate of $750 a year.
Perfect.
But I need somebody to move that, because I'm not going to.
So, move.
I hear it moved. Any discussion on this point? Are people now going to decide? Oh, I see discussion. Yes. On your side of discussion.
Yeah, I'll just note that in Westminster, this, this, when, when the board decides on a compensation rate, it presents it as a warned article to the town meeting. If you were to follow the same, the same route, you would present this compensation as a warned article before the voters of the Union Elementary Annual Meeting.
You know what, Jack? You might be right. I think it might go in the same article, though, as approve this budget, including X dollars per board member.
Well, the awkward part of this is that we, I used that language last year, and it's in the warning for this year to authorize the board to set its compensation.
That's right. So, you already approved it.
So, we've, so we approved it last year, and we are asking them to prove the same language this year. And the only thing that the board has not done is it never got around to actually setting it. And, you know, if people, you know, want to run for the board to object, run for the board to object to this excessive rate of pay, God bless them, and I'm happy to welcome them aboard. Yes.
It's just based on what you just said, and that was my recollection, too, that the voters in the Union Elementary District already approved for this year, that this board could decide its compensation. So, I encourage you to think that this action that could be taken now would allow you to be paid for this current year that you're serving, with the term to be ending on March 1.
Yeah.
And, and the new warning will cover this next year. So, I think it's very fair to take this action and give you all compensation for the last year.
I, my wife's going to laugh at the amount, but nonetheless.
I think it's, you've already warned it. It's already in the.
It is in the warning to allow us to set compensation. And it actually, it passed by more than the budget that last year.
I think, I think the, the language used was, shall the voters authorize the directors on such board to pay its board and district off of its compensation for their terms of service.
Yep. So, you have that authority, and within this budget year, before your terms expire on March 1, is my understanding.
Right. So, with all that ambiguity rolled in, kids, what are we doing here? Elise, what say you?
I say it sounds fine.
Melissa?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Lynn?
She can already answer.
Okay, sorry. I'm telling you, it's getting punchy, is really what it is. This is scary. Okay, so, we have done that, non-tile, item nine, town meeting items. I, to those members that were not here last night, we were discussing having a unified bundle of materials for all the boards. Is that still the way you're hoping to go? That, what is needed for the town meetings is there is either a, there is usually a principals' report. So, I'm hoping I'll see a few principals' reports for the.
We already have.
Okay, but, yeah, but wait, there's more. There, I am anticipating that there will be a, an SU budget and maybe a note from the superintendent on that, as the individual board chair, either the chair or the committee, depending on how you do it. And I guess you guys are going to, you've got a committee report.
Yeah, we've done that.
And we've done that. The items that are left over is we have to have, as follows. You're going to have your budget, Westminster's going to have their budget approved, and they're going to have a candidate for your additional, one or two candidates open for your, for your school district.
Three openings.
Three openings for your school district. So, that will be, so that is, that is ballot one.
Jack, ours are different than theirs.
Well, see, that's where we're headed. Ballot two is the ballot for members. And that has to comply with the form that you guys use at Westminster, because your Westminster people will vote for members of the Unified School District for the coming year, assuming we have anybody to run for. And so, you'll, so it'll need to be in that same format with the, with the registration marks and all that stuff. And that's ballot two.
Now, we've done this, though, because we had to meet our deadlines for Westminster.
But the, the question I have is, there has to be a ballot that Westminster voters will vote on. Well, everybody's going to vote on a ballot, just like the high school has a ballot. So, there will be a Union Elementary School District ballot. And it will have to be in your, in the Westminster form factor. So, that's ballot item two. Ballot item three is the approval of the budget and the other warned articles. And that has to be a separate item, because Westminster is not going to be getting that because you're not voting on our budget. So, I just want to make sure that, that everybody understands that, that we will need to work with, with both the, the town clerk in Westminster and our district clerk, who is Kim Recker. And you're going to, you and she are going to become friends in the next couple of days, so we're going to take care of that. So, and there is a pre-town meeting that is actually going to be a pre-town, a pre-town and, pre-town select board agenda item and a pre, and a pre-district meeting concurrent with that on the 24th of February. So, and this is, I didn't set this, because I wanted to done that, because it's conflicts with your situation.
I'll zoom in.
Well, I may ask you briefly to do that. I'm sorry. Usually, this is, principals speak, or principals speak, somebody's going to speak. But I would hope it will be, be my principal of the elementary school, and we'll just walk people through the budget, and it's a Q and A. It's sort of what we do as a substitute for having a, for having a, an open, an open meeting, district meeting. We also usually, and would strongly encourage, the high school principal to.
I believe that Mr. Brodley is aware and will.
Yeah, that, that, that is, you know, we basically, it's supposed to be a town meeting, but we end up eating two-thirds of the time for long winters in addition to everything else. I have, is my head at 7, but I, but I need to check, I'll check back with you, make sure it's not 6:30. So, and we usually go first.
And will it be two pre-town meetings, or is this just for?
This is, this is just, this is just going to be for the, the about-to-be-unified Elementary School District. So, you, I don't think you need to be there necessarily, unless you want to do a high farewell. I'm out of here. Sayonara to real, you know, kind of thing, which you're certainly free to do. So, that, that's the reason why I wanted to just want everybody to make sure, everybody is all set on that. We also need to make certain that people know at that pre-town, that we're going to have an actual meeting meeting. And we haven't put down the time, but it's probably going to be in April. And what's a fun thing we want to discuss? We want to discuss the allocation of the surplus by then, by hoping we'll have an actual number. And that allocation, you know, provisionally, where, what I'll be presenting to you all is a proposal to divide it up by, essentially, based on a dollar-by-dollar basis. For those folks that paid in, get paid back proportionately. So, I have no idea what that looks like, but I've asked, I've asked Kim Recker to gather that. So I have no idea what that looks like, but I've asked, I've asked Kim Recker to gather that information, and my understanding is she was in process for doing that. So that's item one. And item two, the one I've been talking about since November, is we absolutely have to substitute the interim articles of agreement, which we never actually agreed to, and have a set, an articles of agreement that we agreed to. So about 75% of the language in the interim articles is irrelevant. We have to, the main decision we have to make is, are we going to go by Australian ballot as policy? Are we going to actually have meeting meetings? And two, are we going to go with a, a at-large reserve seat system, which we've been using to everybody's amusement the last couple of years, where each town gets reserved seats? Or do we want to have Athens and Grafton comprise different electoral districts? In which case, we'll have to figure out what that looks like in terms of one man, one vote. I understand that the folks met in, the select board met in Athens and had some sentiment on that subject, right? Did you not meet with the Athens Select Board and sort of pitch the two options that we have in terms of?
Oh, yeah.
And Jessa, you and I need to do the same thing to the, to the select board in Grafton, to sort of walk them through that and get some sense, because, and I'd also want to do it at the, at the, actually, by the time we have the pre-town, I'd like to have a pretty good idea which way we're going to go with that. So, so those are the items, and I just want to make sure everybody is clear on them. There's no, no action on that, just, Jessa would ask people to be there if they could, and also know that I might be begging for people to run for some of these seats, because we've got a number of vacancies, and I, if, if people don't fill them, I can't have a quorum in March.
Yeah, can you just let me know when, when I need to go before the select board, and I will attend with you?
All right, yeah, I, we'll send them a, I'll send them a note tomorrow, and we'll see what time we can come in and talk to them about it. Okay, that's it, kids. 10, date and location of next meeting, which is, is there any sense that we need to meet early? Or can we meet in, at the 4th Thursday of February?
I mean, only other than.
Because again, I'm thinking of your availability, nonavailability, so I'm asking for that reason.
I mean, is there a need that I can proceed, other than just reporting out the boiler? Do you guys, I mean, I?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't think so.
I mean, I can just share that with you, and you guys, you know.
I can send an email chain around to people.
When are we going to get to meet with the auditors and?
Yes, that's a good point.
So I had given them your schedule, and let me double-check, because they may be looking at the 10th, because we had talked to them already about your schedule, and we were panning that out. I was supposed to meet with Ron Smith this week, and he had something come up to come with me. So let me reach out to them and see what's on theirs, because I originally gave them, I believe, that first date, so we may need to test just for that.
Okay.
I'll do that right now while we're talking.
So what provision we marked it for the town, but that we, we reserve the right to cancel?
Which wouldn't require the principals on that date.
Unless it's just like the hangout way tonight, I don't understand.
Yeah, although, the 4th are normal. When you're saying the 4th, it's the 24th, which we're having the town meeting.
Right. Let's definitely meet on the 10th. Let me, let me, let me check back with you to see if we, if we want to, because one year we met while the, while the pre-town, while there was this like, pre-town meeting, you'll recall that, with that whole business about buying the building that came up on that time.
Oh, yeah.
So let's, I will circle back with you. Jessa, was that you?
Sorry.
Oh, did you, were you speaking to us, or you just, you know?
No, I wasn't speaking to you.
Were you ordering at the restaurant? In which case, can we get some, too? All right, cool. Then it'll be, the next meeting will be at the 10th, unless you get a notice to the contrary. And we'll try to figure out what, what date, if any, we need for the, for the other meeting, bearing in mind that Andy's actually liked some vacation time. I don't know why.
He used to be at a baseball game with me, that's all.
That's a discussion. All right, director's comments, let's do that. I'm going to, with the Westminster folks, go first if they'd like to make any comments.
I don't have any additional comments tonight. This is ever to thank everybody for being here. Always appreciate it.
How about you, David?
I will just note that this is, we're drawing down to, in the times that the Westminster Board meets with the Union Elementary Board, and how wonderful it is to hear the principals' reports together, how I think it's, it's easy to take away good ideas and good things from both schools that can help both schools. And I will remind everyone that when we were working on Act 46 and our alternative governance proposal that was never adopted by the state, but that that involved all of the schools, districts, meeting a couple of times a year, and doing that kind of thing. And I would encourage us to, to plan that for something like two or four meetings a year, that the, that the elementary schools have all the principals come, have a pared-down agenda so far as administrative stuff is concerned, and really concentrate on the educational side of things at the different schools, and, and share the ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, nothing, Charlie, nothing.
All right, we'll walk through, through the, through our board. Alyssa, anything?
I just thank everyone for being here, and hope you all have a good night and safe home.
How about you, Melissa, even though I concatenated both of your names tonight, I just don't recognize them. I think I did it twice.
I'm all set, thank you.
Jessa?
Um, I just got a message that pre-town meeting in Grafton looks like it's on the 24th at 5:30. Does that sound right to you, Jack?
I did not know that, but we'll, we'll accommodate that and make sure everybody is prepped and ready. And I need to make sure David and the team over at know that we intend to present, because I thought they do, but I'm not 100% sure that they do.
Okay, yeah, that's what is in the minutes of the select board meeting from the 18th, was that it would be on 2/24 at 5:30 PM.
It would be really peachy if they coordinated with us as much as they want us to coordinate with them, but that's just me. How about you, Ginger?
I just want to thank all the staff at the schools, including Angela and Liz, for all the work they're doing. I know it's difficult times, and thank you so much. And that's all I have to say.
All right, Lynn?
Do you know what Ginger says? Just constantly amazed at how much you guys are getting accomplished in these crazy days. Hope you get a moment to take a breather.
Two for me. One, I too think that we are winding down, and in many ways, I'm hoping that we can reach out to our colleagues in Rockingham, because I think that there's a lot of redundancy in our meetings. A lot of material would be well-done if we could do it together, particularly, I think would be useful for all our boards to hear what's going on at the middle school. And I do think we've worked together, and maybe you set, could set a good example. I've got some specific ideas about that, but my hope is that we might be able to actually cut some meetings out of the schedule that I think has proved to be very punishing to board members and somewhat disquieting for people to, to participate in our governance. And I, I have to say, I'm a little gutted about the members that will be stepping down next year. I, I have found it absolutely wonderful to work with you guys, and I'm a little terrified of what it'll look like when you're not around, if only just keep me organized and occasionally point out when I'm making mistakes, which happens a couple of times a meeting. So I just want you to know that not all boards run this well, which may be terrifying, I can know that, but they don't, and I will miss you all when you are doing something more fun than this. So that's all I got, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Then at 7:32, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.
Good night.